Much later.
May.
You even do a May. Okay, so we were good.
Okay, we're back in the record. Mic's on?
Mic's on.
Cam's on, mic's on. Okay, back, we are Board of Standards and Appeals, public hearing. Continued hearing items, item number 17. 2414 BZ, 10602 Sutter Avenue, Queens.
Okay, they wanted an adjournment to April 26 with a submission on April 6.
Item number 19, 10214 BZ, 4017 AVP, Brooklyn.
Good afternoon, Moshe Friedman. We're saving a tree today, so our, my color-coded list is on the phone.
Your what list?
My color-coded list of what we spoke of, you spoke about yesterday is on the phone.
How high-tech you are, okay.
Okay, so I'll just go through, we attended the hearing yesterday. The second floor vestibule depth was just corrected already. When we give the next submission, you'll have the corrected. There is a planter every five feet on the planter. What we're doing, you see those little square boxes? I felt as a gardener that it would be easier to take care of if the planter, the dirt, wasn't just all down. So every, you see the little boxes, but I can make a better detail of that box. And every five feet is a planter without a bottom.
But it's in the ground.
It's in the ground, exactly. Just a built-up planter so that the vines will be able to spread and they'll be able to be taken care of and not have dirt and going, otherwise you'd have too much dirt around.
Okay, but there can't be planters where the soil freezes, right? That's the whole thing, they have to be soil.
They're connected to the ground. It has no hole, there's no, there's no bottom. It'll be, it's, it's just a built-up.
Like a curb.
Right.
Something like a curb?
Right.
Okay, you'll show us a detail because we want to make sure that it's not that they don't freeze every summer, kind of thing.
Right, no problem. Okay. Yes, we'll get the specifications on the wrought iron fence. I told the rabbi to go out there, talk to a metal, and we'll get the full specifications exactly and put it on the plan.
Okay.
Next. We'll take care of the, on page 24, the full depth of the building, the dotted, we'll take care of that. Actually, it was taken care of already since yesterday. The noise at 10 hours in the note of an SBC rating of 35 also is already taken care of. BSA condition of variance should be stated to limiting number of people, because I'm great that you guys will take care of in the resolution, I believe. Okay. And we'll change the rooftop terrace to say for residential use only.
Good, okay. And...
And the traffic study, there's being taken care of.
Okay, and you're gonna be looking for a permanent solution to the parking?
We will go through it all and come up with a comprehensive report.
Good. The urban design analysis needs to be...
Yes, spoke to you already.
Okay.
You'll take care of that.
I won't get any calls from, on the traffic analysis from the councilman's office.
He's asking me, please, that...
I mean, if you're willing to do it, please, please do, do that. But I was just getting calls that it was onerous, and I want to make sure that...
I am, I am.
You're clear on what you do and you're okay doing it, okay.
Okay, and then, um, what is it? Okay, yeah, and then, I don't know, we'll make it a condition that we're gonna minimize the gathering outside.
Right, we spoke about that, that you guys are gonna put that on the resolution. It's like they have that same note that they have on bars. When the, when the, but there is actually, I saw a resolution from the board that had that on it, though.
Okay. All right, any other comments, questions? Are there any speakers on this?
Oh.
Yes, yes, we do.
Please state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Good afternoon to the board. My name is Joseph Zalinski, live on a corner, right next door to the synagogue. They're parking on the grass and in their driveway. One car in the driveway, they back it in, and they're parking on their own grass, and they're ruining my property by driving on my grass also, right? And my sprinkler system. Do they have a CO for occupancy for mitzvah? And do they have a CO for occupancy for synagogue?
No.
Are you asking?
I'm asking, yes.
You're asking. Actually, let's see, they filed for a synagogue, I don't think they have a COO, no.
Because they didn't put in the handicap ramp, I believe.
Right, right.
And it's also a two-family house, not a three-family.
Well, let's see. It was, they got a permit way back when, if I have this correct, I have to go look. Yeah, they filed a schedule, they filed plans to convert a house into a synagogue with a rabbi's apartment above.
Did they get a CO for it?
They did not, that's the reason they're here.
Are they gonna ever get a CO for that?
That's why we're here. That's why we're here.
Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, also, when the rabbi first moved in, he didn't tell me it was gonna be synagogue. Because when he put the mitzvah in, I would've had it stopped. All right? He dug down four feet to make the ceiling higher, and he dug down maybe another three feet to make a swimming pool, what I call.
It's not a swimming pool. It's a cellar, you mean, right?
All right, he made two of them. If I, he lied to me from the day he moved in, and he doesn't know why I'm mad at him. If you tell the truth, I don't get mad at you. If you lie, and I find out later on you lied or everything you said to me, I can't help it, I'm mad at him.
Thank you. Anybody else wanna speak? No? Sure? Speaker.
Hi, my name is Ethan Lecter, I live in the neighborhood, I live down the block. Just wanna start with a quote by Martin Luther King, "Life's most persistent and important question is, what are we doing for other, what are you doing for others?" And I think that's what the synagogue is all about, is about the community, and it serves the community. I know it serves for my family. I know one of the biggest complaints that were mentioned was in regards to the parking. I personally walk to the synagogue because I'm down the block. Saturdays, for example, there, none of us drive because of the Sabbath, so there is no issues with parking during the week time from when I've been there. And just in regards to neighbors, and I brought pictures just from this morning specifically, I mean, I didn't know I did print it up because I've never spoken like this before, that some of the neighbors actually put up signs of no parking in valid parking spots. So here, pass it around. So when people wonder why there's no parking spaces, it's because some of the neighbors are actually putting up signs of no parking in valid spots. And you can swipe to the next one, it was a closer sign of what it is. Listen, in regards to community, this, so I'm speaking in regards to parking, it is, for us, for myself, in regards to the other people in the community, again, I can't speak in regards to what was just said, but in regards to specifically that we are very respectful of the community, we're respectful and try to be of the neighbors. And I guess that's really all I have to say. If there's any questions.
Okay. This is, so this is a photograph showing some kind of structure in a parking space.
So we've called the police, the police have referred us to the Department of Buildings, the Department of Buildings has now referred us to the Department of Transportation because of the illegal, I guess, sign that's put on the street.
But this isn't, there's a curb cut in front, so you can't park there anyway.
You can't, it's right in front of the tree, there's enough space for a park, for a...
There is, okay, so it's foreshortened, it's very hard to tell from this photograph. But anyway, thanks. Okay. But, you know, the point is, if some neighbors are having a problem, it doesn't mean that there's no problem, right? Means it needs to be addressed. Okay.
I'm sorry.
Some neighbors are having a problem, so the problems that are caused need to be addressed.
As a community, we are aware of it, and we are taking responsibility for that, and ensuring and specifically telling people.
Excuse me, you can't put a call in, there's no room.
Okay, you don't have a conversation amongst yourselves, you address the board, please.
The issue specifically, and I know there was a past issue in regards to childcare, and that was one of the issues that was brought up in regards to supervision. I personally am taking actually comp time in order to do this, I work for the city, I work for ACS, and specifically ensuring that all children are monitored. I bring my own children to the synagogue themselves, and ensure that there's always adequate supervision in regards to allegations that children are not being watched and they're running rampant, it's totally not true. And the fact is, if it was, obviously, as an added reporter, I may be the first one to ensure and follow up with that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other speakers? You've already spoken. Yes.
Hi, good afternoon, my name is Michael Gross. I've stood in front of you once before, I pray in the synagogue, my children, my grandchildren. You've had, our rabbi stood in front of you already at least two, three times, and you could see his sincerity. He's only interested in helping and servicing the community. We are not looking to fight with the neighbors, we're looking to embrace them. And, and the fact is, that neighborhoods do change, and because of the change, we need to adapt and have, and have appropriate place to worship for the changing, for the changing neighborhood. But anything possible is being worked on, as you see, as spoken, Mr. Friedman, and everything's being accommodated, only to be in peace and harmony with the neighbors, where, only for a positive purpose. And I hope that my sincerity will come through to the board. Thank you.
In future, it's a lot easier if you do things legally.
Thank you.
Yes. No, ma'am, do you wanna speak?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay, come.
According to the picture that you just showed...
State your name and maybe pull the mic down. Pull the mic down because the kid can't hear you.
My name is Rosemary Giddo.
Okay.
I stay at Joe Zalinski's house many times. I'm there more than I am home sometimes, because he was operated on. They have no respect that he was operated on by even helping him when he has helped them for 10 years. That's number one. Number two, the parking area that he just showed, that on the cell phone, that is the next-door neighbor from us, that she parks her car there. She's a schoolteacher, and she has to get in and out. So she, that's where she parks her car, in front of her house. So what he's got, showing you, that there's a cone there that's in front of her house, has nothing to do with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Please come.
My name is Seth Krantz, I'm a prior Department of Education employee. I've been going to the synagogue since 2008. 2008, and I've seen the synagogue grow. All we're trying to do here is allow more people to pray and benefit from the services that are going on in the synagogue. The community, the Jewish community, is growing, and all we're asking for is for more people to get involved in praying to God and sharing Jewish thoughts with the rabbi. He's a very effective leader, and we've seen people being drawn in by him. And all we're trying to do is to get more people involved.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Avram Steyman. I moved into the community about a year, over a year ago, just because of the rabbi that promotes honesty, integrity, warmth, and care. Because of that honesty is why I moved in, and I myself, one of the main things that the synagogue, what we have, is we have a lot of, the prayer is one of the main areas that we, that we spend our time there. And sitting on a chair, each person has, each family has one or two seats. 75% of the synagogue has one seat, although they have more than one person sitting in the seat. I myself have a three-year-old that I share a seat with. Mr. Leifert sits on my right. He has about a four or five-year-old that he shares a seat with. To my left, someone shares a seat with their son. And the community is expanding because of what the rabbi promotes. And what we're asking is for the ability to make an expansion so that we can include more people and to have a better community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, Mr. Friedman?
By the, by the way, I believe the board has a CO for the building, the original CO which showed four families.
Right, okay, but CO for the actual use?
No, I know, but the original CO was for four families.
Right. Are there any other questions from the commissioners? Okay. So I think, I think you've made a lot of really good changes to the design of the building to have less of an impact on the neighbors, it's a much more respectful solution. So I think that the things that are, you've already made the changes, but we haven't seen them.
Right.
Small changes to the drawings, right? Little bit of update on the urban design analysis about impact on adjoining properties.
Right.
The residential use comment at the rabbi's roof level. And then what we're really waiting for is the parking study and the, and the solution about parking. But I think we can close this, and, and, you know, and if necessary, if there's discussion that's required, we can reopen, but I think mostly you're gonna solve this problem for us?
Yes.
And so we can close, okay?
Okay, so let's do a submission date, by the way, of about May 4.
Yeah, I didn't forget, okay.
After Pesach, it's not going to happen.
Okay, so what do you need?
Submission date of May 4.
May 4. Okay, so that would be a here, potentially a decision date of May 24.
That's fine.
Okay. So for a motion to close? Chair promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Althea Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Item number 222914BZ, 5505 Myrtle Avenue, Queens.
This is withdrawn? Uh, yes, they requested a withdrawal, so do we vote on? Is there a motion to withdraw? Okay.
Yeah.
So for a motion to withdraw. Chair promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Althea Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
Do you wanna close it? Yeah, close it. Sorry, it's withdrawn.
Withdrawn, withdrawn, right?
Item number 2124014BZ, 1620 Shore Boulevard, Brooklyn.
Whoa.
Whoa.
Good afternoon. I'm Gregory Teron, the applicant. And I did have a chance to see your video from yesterday, the executive session. And would like to address your remarks.
Sorry, Tony, sorry, just one second, we can't hear.
I'm sorry, I turned my mic.
Yeah. Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, well, as a first order of business, I think there was a technical error by me in my office, and I have to apologize to you. If you look at the cover letter that was in Dropbox and that you received in there, it had the statement of facts again as well.
Sorry, sorry, statement of, this is the March 3 submission.
I want to see if you had gotten that, any of you had the opportunity to actually see the cover letter and read that.
March 3, March 2 cover letter?
Yes.
Yeah, we did.
In any event, that, that cover letter attempted to somewhat...
We didn't get this. No, we didn't get, we didn't get this. No, we didn't.
We didn't get that?
No.
I apologize because that...
It was, I guess, two statements submitted instead of this.
Yeah, and I don't know why, nobody said anything to me when we did the submission, but apparently one PDF got saved over another, and I apologize, but there's the letter. And if you go to that file now, the cover letter should be in there, yes?
Well...
We don't have that access, but I have a statement of facts from...
Oh, you don't have access? Oh, I see, okay.
I have a statement of facts from March 2.
Right.
Which is essentially a repeat of the cover letter.
Somewhat.
Just the same exact thing.
Well, I wouldn't call it a repeat of something. Justification, things like that.
No, no, but that's what I mean, I don't, it's a different, so we didn't ask about it because we have something submitted, right? You submitted something on March 2 that's called Statement of Facts and Findings.
I mistakenly submitted it as Statement of Facts and as cover letter in that file.
Oh, I see.
You see my point?
But it has different headings.
Yeah, and it was, it was a technical thing, and I apologize, but here's the letter. Anyway, what's very clear from your comments is that I need to be much more detailed in the Statement of Facts and weave some things together and explain them, and I will get to that. But one example would be, Mr. Singer was very helpful to me, I appreciate it, when we discussed the setback for the garage. The garage, which is the cellar, has to be 18 feet, garage door has to be 18 feet from the front yard boundary. And to accomplish that, we just took the plan that was there before, and we took the cellar and moved it back two feet, therefore cantilevering the second, the actual first, second, third floors. And that's, that section of the zoning regulation, by the way, is 20-2345A, which requires the minimum required 18 feet from the garage door. But the actual house is 16 feet from the border, from the front boundary. I don't think that was very clear in my Statement of Facts. And I apologize because that provision is very helpful, and Mr. Singer advised me of that. So, going on to the, the illegal rear yard. I mentioned in my, in my letter, actually, I think it is, but nonetheless, that I had to submit a new survey by Mr. O. Buckley. You have that survey in your materials? I did not even know that survey existed.
Wait a second, before you do that, the first, maybe I need to look at the section, but the first floor, the living room floor?
16.5.
Is 16.5. The garage floor is 18, that's what you're saying, right? So the garage floor, which is at grade, is 18 foot back, but then the... Sorry?
The cellar levels.
The cellar level...
Same thing.
Technical cellar. The grade, grade level is at, is set back 18, but the first occupiable floor...
Which is one floor up, if I may say.
Which is one floor up, okay.
Right, that's 16 feet.
Got it, okay.
And shown in the BZ now.
Okay.
Don't even know.
Sorry, go ahead.
So I, you did make a mention yesterday that you thought the parking pad was only 16 and a half feet.
Right.
I think it's clearly 18 feet, and I think it meets the code.
Okay.
I hope Mr. Singer agrees. He knows it better than I.
If it's what we discussed.
Exactly, isn't it?
Yeah, I think it's, I agree. Because it moves, it's the, it's the front wall, it's not...
Yes, right. And I agree that it's meeting the, certainly the intention, because now the car doesn't back onto the sidewalk, that's the issue.
Exactly. Right, and we can cantilever the two feet, not any difficulty. And so, well, I'll take care of that one issue, I think that's, that should be sufficient on there. There's a, when you mentioned the rear yard and a waiver that would be required, you were confused, I'm not confused, but I don't think there really is a confusion here. I think that there was a misunderstanding by me. And that is that the, the rear yard of this property was probably about 24 feet. But they added on this little shed or boiler, whatever, that we saw, it was four feet, one inch, that was, and that's where we ended up with 19 feet, 17, 19 feet, seven inches before. So when you recommended the last time, we have to do something about this, we eliminated that four-foot, one-inch shed, and went back to what I believe was the original one-story home rear yard wall, if I can put it that way. Because if you look at the new survey that I've submitted by Mr. O. Buckley, I had him go out and actually measure the rear, the setback on the homes to the left and the right, the east and the west, which are 16, 18 Shore Boulevard, and the corner house on Oxford. And both of those are lined up, if you look on the O. Buckley survey, they're both lined up to be about 24 feet. But these were all one-story before. And I think what you were asking me for, and I didn't make it clear, is that now we're asking to go up from that point two stories. So that's where we're, I have to ask you for relief for that, going up to the second story?
Okay.
Of the, of the rear yard setback.
Okay.
So I do need, I asked, need to ask you for relief, and that's what I wanted to ask you. Am I asking for a variance from a pre-existing non-compliant condition that's only good as to the first floor, but I have to ask for a variance for the second?
No, so, so that's the thing. If this was not before the board, you'd be able to establish to the Department of Buildings that your 24-foot rear yard is an existing non-compliant, legal non-compliant condition, right? And the Buildings Department would say, okay, we believe you arguably because you showed them a survey, right? But if you wanted to add a second floor, then you're increasing the degree of non-compliance.
Yes.
So unless you pull back to a 30-foot rear yard on the second floor, you have to come here to be able to extend it vertically to the 24-point. So yeah, so the answer is, you need a waiver from us for the second floor if you wanna go back to the 24-foot point. But I think what you did by showing us the survey is to establish that the neighbors also have 24-foot rear yards.
About that, yes.
So that's the neighborhood character.
Yes, it just seemed like that all the way.
So you mean inadvertently also showed us the neighborhood character, which was one of the things we wanted you to address.
Sure.
Okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So I will need the waiver, that I now understand is really because of the second floor.
Correct, and so I don't believe your objection sheet refers to the rear yard. So you actually need, in order for us to be able to waive something, we need DOB to deny something?
Mm-hmm.
So you have to go back to DOB and get your objection modified to reflect the need for that rear yard waiver.
I have to go back to DOB for reject, for to revoke, okay?
For an objection. Otherwise, we don't have a process where we can grant you something.
Okay. All right, we'll go, we'll go on there. And when you mentioned as to the being too tall of a structure, the first thing, of course, that ran into my mind, and I may be mall, may be wrong here, but you seem to be indicating that the entire structure's going too far, too high, at what amounts to 45 feet above grade? Total? Right. And the only reason, well, obviously, the reason it's so high is because unlike other homes that have been larger left and right, this is post-sandy. And now because of, gee, we're lifting it up. And I asked the architect specifically, scale this house and that third floor, which I call a half floor, to fit into the neighborhood. Looking at 116 Oxford Street, which is directly behind this house, that is post-sandy, approved. Smaller house, larger FAR, et cetera. 20-foot rear yard setback was approved by this board and built.
Post-sandy?
Post-sandy.
And how high is it?
It's 45 feet.
Okay.
It's the same. And when I asked the architect this morning, why is it that you used, the way you measured the way you did, because the board commented about it yesterday? He said, what measurements you talking about? It's only the height, so forth. And he said to me, there's a copy of 116 Oxford Street that you approved. He took the measurements, and he took the way he measured off of your approval of 116 Oxford Street. Here's a larger set of plans, you can look at it. A7, I think, is the, A7, AA is the elevation. So he said, he literally used the same exact method of measuring as used, as employed there. So I wonder if, maybe it's a miscommunication.
There's an error in his, well, you have to measure the height and the perimeter wall height from the design flood elevation.
The height and the, and the perimeter wall, from design flood.
Right, and you, well, he measured from first floor elevation, which is incorrect, and so did your architect. So you have to lower that about 2.3 feet. You see the design flood elevation?
Sure.
That's where you measure it from, not from the proposed first floor.
Okay.
Yep, and your perimeter wall height will actually be non-compliant. So, you're going to have to lower that by a certain amount.
So, what happened on 116 Oxford Street, then?
Well, maybe it could have been an error, that's right. Or it could have been
I mean, you should understand
No, no, he hasn't made, if he, if he, if he measured from the design flood elevation, he would have been okay.
But we really don't know.
But yours, his perimeter wall height is actually lower than yours. Because he has a 19 foot from the first floor, it would have been 21 feet from the design flood elevation. And his building height is actually, he says 30 feet from the first floor, but it would have been 32 feet from the design flood elevation. So
So, what he should really also be looking at is probably what was presented at the Building Department, because that error may have been corrected in the permitting process. But the point is, there's a law, and he has to follow the law. So, the law says you measure above design flood, not based on what the neighbor may have done incorrectly, right? So
And the other thing I had thought regarding the height here is, do you need that cellar level to be, what's the minimum garage height you can have? I mean, because you're, you have
You, you're an engineer, I'm a lawyer.
Well, you should ask your architect.
I understand what you're saying.
You know, you don't necess, it's like eight and 1/2 feet or something.
Well, that's normal, I think, eight and 1/2 feet would be
But this is not a living floor, it's just for your car.
Right.
Yes.
So
So, 7'6". 7 feet is a minimum ceiling height, and 7'6" is probably a minimum reasonable height.
Yeah, so I think you could get some lower height there. You're going to have to lower it somewhat, because your perimeter wall height, if you measure it correctly, will not be 21 feet. It'll be too high.
Too high, so it's got to take it out of the cellar.
Yeah.
Little bit. I did leave Mr. Van. I would still leave it to Van.
But I, I mentioned about measuring from the design flood elevation last hearing. So, are you sure that the architect understands?
I conveyed it to him. I mentioned it again, and here's the answer I got, and I'm sorry, but it was that, well, I just picked it off the same thing as 116, they did the same
Oh, well, that's, that's not shown correctly here, but if they had, if they had measured it correctly
Yeah.
that they would be okay. That's not your case.
There is a chance he might still be okay.
No, because it's about a few inches
Widely, widely
Oh, because it's 18.9 inches
The building height is okay, but not the perimeter wall height.
No, the perimeter, I'm looking at the proposed wall height
Proposed building height is 35 feet, by the way.
No, no, I'm going to
And then you have to add two, you have to add 27 inches to that.
Oh, 27 inches. So, 27 inches puts him at 21 feet. Isn't that where he's supposed to be?
I don't think it's 21 feet. 27, oh, might be.
Which means if he just takes the line down, he doesn't have to make any changes to that.
Right. Well, I'd have to double check. Okay.
Okay, so
Your perimeter wall height might be complying if you measured from the design flood elevation.
Well, the perimeter wall height might be complying.
Well, but the architect, so here's the deal about architects. They have to follow the law.
Why didn't you tell me?
They have to follow the regulations. So, they have to look up Appendix G, and they have to follow the instructions there and not say, we copied the other plans, because that just never works, because you never know who did those plans, right? So, that goes for a lot of things, including the drawings don't show how we know enough of the existing building has been retained to qualify as an existing building, and this is an enlargement, right? So, he has to show what walls are being retained, which ones are new, and make it super clear to us, and in the section also make it super clear to us what is being retained structurally.
I picked that up yesterday. I understand you completely.
Okay.
I mentioned that to him, and if you look at the video from the last time I was here on February 2nd, I said, they're working on that diagram as I speak, and they never did it.
Okay.
Instead, he told me, oh, no, we just went by exactly what they did at 116 Oxford.
Well, I really wish that architect was not doing that. Just put that aside, no.
Good way to get
Yeah, that's fine. Big garbage can, I think, here. I see where we went down the wrong route there as well, okay.
Okay.
We'll get you a better, better explanation, description. Do you need that from an engineer?
I think the architect made an explanation, but then he didn't, he didn't show it on the plans. Of course, anything below the design flood elevation has to be water-resistant. So, it has to be concrete.
Yeah.
So, you should show, and you explained how your existing footings and walls are concrete, but you have to show that you're, you know, just put a notation that you're lifting the first floor to your first floor elevation, and then you're going to somehow put in some columns and support either underneath or in between those cellar walls.
Okay.
And that they're going to be concrete.
The diagram of that
One diagram, yes. And, because his narrative that he provided us with told us how you're going to demolish the building bit by bit. So, when we were done, the rest of the story was finished. We had none of the existing building, which constitutes demolition, not an enlargement, okay? So, and I would really recommend, because this is, you're not that familiar with this process for this applica, this type of application, that next time, please bring your architect so we can answer these questions quickly.
Well, I'm hoping that the next time will be the last time.
No, it won't necessarily be the last time if you don't answer these questions, and please don't submit something that you haven't reviewed to see that it is responsive to our questions. Don't assume that the architect is doing it, because he didn't the last time. Okay? That's the role of the lawyer. The lawyer is supposed to make sure that everything's put together and responsive.
And then you're going to get rid of those cellar slabs that are shown below grade.
Get rid of the what?
The cellar slabs that are shown below grade, right?
And we also wanted a note with respect to the curb cut, that has to say, if approved by DOB?
Yeah, I saw that. Do you want, you want to note it on, on the, on the plot plan with Appendix G on the left, what did the others, you want to note that's provided that they approved?
Right.
And then we also had a question about the open area. I'm not sure how we even respond to that.
Well, I guess the open area, it's, it's no longer an issue, because
Because he pulls back, yes, okay.
The garage door.
Right, okay.
Right, so the 16.5, I don't know where you got it from, but
Okay.
that's out. The diagram I'll get you, the, the waiver I'll weave in, I'll be more detailed about all of that. How about the structure and the volume and the height, whether it comports with the neighborhood? The difficulty here is, you know, with the streetscape, it's changing because of post-sandy enlargements. And there's no indication to me that this, this, this house is anywhere out of character for that neighborhood, particularly since right behind it on 116 Oxford, you have a first, a grade cellar garage, and then you have three stories above it. So, it's the same situation. You're going to have these houses that are a little bit higher, with a little bit more bulk of
So, you, so we're basing it on what the current character of the neighborhood? So, in order for you to make this case, you're, you're going to need to get photographs of the neighborhood to show what you're talking about, and at least, and you can get a set of drawings here. But it's photographs of the neighborhood where you indicate the heights of the houses that you're relying on to make your case, and you should talk about
Well, I think we have streetscapes, though, Mrs., I might as well, we have streetscapes in the file.
But you're not showing this house on the streetscape, are you? You're making, you're making your case based on this, right? So, but you don't show a single photograph of this house.
Well, he does have it in the streetscape.
We had the last one, we had the streetscape, and it showed all the houses.
It's sort of black and white.
It's like he's sketched in.
Yes.
Like rendering. That's sketched in of the proposed. Yeah, he's sketched the proposed. Proposed, I mean, when I say this, I mean, the house around the corner
The one that he's using as, as his example.
Oh, this, this is house around the corner.
Yeah, this is Oxford Street.
116 Oxford Street.
Yeah. You're using Oxford Street to say you've got a tall, that, that this is kind of the way of the future, but you're not saying, you're not showing us anything.
Show us the context of the way of the future.
Because it's supposed to be based on current character.
So, you want to revise streetscape?
You need a streetscape that is going to include the house, this house that you've given to us. So, you're going to give us a streetscape for what's behind your house.
Revised streetscape is a different house, different situation, we didn't show that.
Correct.
We'll revise the streetscape to show that the new proposed home and where the new 116 Oxford is.
Could you also ask your architect to check the height of his flue for the fireplace, the chimney? The height of the chimney? He's got it on his terrace, and it's basically the height of a person, as opposed to above the ridge line. That could be not a good thing.
And for instance, there's a house next door to you, 1618 Shore. And there's a streetscape photo, like, there's a lot of houses here. You can't tell how high they are, right? So, maybe what you could do is have the architect go and tell us what their heights are, that might help inform this discussion, right, in terms of neighborhood character.
Have our, have, have my client's architect check the house, the height of the house?
That's how it's done, yeah. Or you could have your consultant do it, but somebody should check the heights. That's, that's how you're making the urbanism argument, which is one reason why an architect should be here in this conversation. That's what architects are trained to do.
Yeah, well, you know, it's, it's, it's not been easy dealing with this architect, period. And so, I've, you know, this is basically on me to try to figure out what he is doing at times, and quite frankly
We'll make him come here, so we'll make it easier to deal with him.
He didn't know he had to be here today until yesterday, and his wife's in the hospital, so that's why
Okay, so, you're going to have a month's notice, make the architect come here the next time, we'll deal with him. Because it's, it's just going to drag this out needlessly.
From what I can see that I have to do, which amounts to some revisions of my statement of fact, obviously a new cover letter, some adjustments on the plans that they need to make and should be able to make without too much trouble. Assuming all that, and getting a new streetscape showing the new proposed house and the new homes in the area, I don't think that's going to be terribly difficult. Is the soonest we could do this, is in a month?
No, I didn't get to that part yet. You sound like you're not going to bring the architect. You need to bring the architect. It's simple.
I'm going to bring the architect if I need him.
No, 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 that's not
If I can satisfy
Sorry, excuse me, sir.
That's not how it works.
Here, we'll bring the architect, okay? Because we need the answers from the architect, we need the responses from the architect, and
What response do you need right now from the architect?
I've been asking you the questions.
Go ahead.
I would like the architect to address them here, present. I'm not understanding this, don't you have
I'm here to answer these questions, rather than just take care of them on paper and get the plans done?
Because we're not getting our answers.
What answers don't you have now?
All the ones that, all the same questions we asked the last time are now the outstanding questions today. Right?
It's not okay, I'm not understanding what your question is. So, I'm here to answer questions or address issues and dress questions, but
Okay, I'm not going to drag this on. If you choose not to bring the architect, this is just going to keep going until we get all of our questions answered. So, you know, maybe you should have a conversation with counsel.
My question procedurally is, at what point can I have the questions that I can present to him so that I can get answers and make sure he's ready to answer them for you?
I've already asked you all the questions. That you're having trouble understanding them is because you do one thing for a living, and that guy does another thing for a living, and that's why we're having this disconnect. So, please respect that there are professionals that do other things for a living, right? Sorry, I've already asked all the
I don't like your comment, what's better?
Counselor, you're out of line.
You're out, sorry.
I respect my colleagues, and I respect
All right, we're going to, we're going to be done with this now.
I don't respect somebody speaking to me, though.
This matter is going to be adjourned.
All right?
You're not representing your client adequately. The chair is trying to advise you so that you can stop, be quiet, listen, and then leave. Good.
Okay, so we went through all the questions. Are there any speakers on this?
I have my clients here, and they're going to ask me, what are the questions we have
There's a speaker, I'd like to hear the speaker. This is a different person? Okay. Okay. Okay, that's, please, yeah, that's fine. There's a speaker here.
I'm asking, what question, though?
Please, I've gone to speakers. I've, I'm going to speakers now, please step aside. Please, please step aside, there's a speaker.
Good afternoon, my name is Laura Ziva. I'm the owner of 1620 Shore Boulevard.
You're adjacent?
No, 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 I'm the owner.
Oh, you're the owner of this property? I'm sorry.
Of this property.
You're not really a speaker, you're the owner, okay.
I'm the owner. And basically, we are here in front of the BSA hearing to get approval for the enlargement of the house. I bought this house one year after Hurricane Sandy. And I'm trying to build a house for my family. It's basically, I have two kids, my husband and my mother-in-law that lives with me. So, I understand the frustration between, I guess, you know, or the miscommunication about architect and the lawyer and the board, what are they actually asking? But it would be wonderful to hear what are exactly, and we're definitely going to bring the architect, and we're definitely going to have all these measures taking what actually the board is asking, so we can basically move on and, you know, try to build the house. I did reach to the architect last night, very late, because he wasn't in the office. He had an emergency this morning. But I assured that he will come next time, and hopefully with what you need between the diagram and what Mr. Terrell needs to do. If we can push this in two weeks, in the April, so we can get this done, it would be very helpful. I appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are there any other speakers on this? And if you don't want to come speak, but you're here for this, you're welcome to submit written testimony? Okay. And you would submit it either, what's the email? She'll give you the email address, or did give Okay, so submit it by email before the next hearing date, okay? Okay. So, in short, we went through the questions already. We have, we need a waiver from DOB about the second floor. Or not a waiver, sorry, an objection from DOB about the second floor. We need an area study that establishes that the proposed height is correct, is, let's say, compatible with neighborhood character.
Streetscape?
We need, we need an, we need an area study, I did not say streetscape, I said an area study that establishes that the house is appropriately within neighborhood character. We need, what else do we need? Oh, we need the perimeter wall height measured against the design flood elevation.
As well as the building height.
And the building height measured against design flood.
We need the cellar floors that are shown below grade to be removed.
We need a note on the drawings that's, that indicates that the curb cut must be approved by DOB. And we need a di, we need the plans diagrammed and the sections diagram to show that enough of the existing building is being retained to constitute an enlargement.
And I guess a detail showing how the work is going to be performed.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
And explore if it's possible to lower the cellar level.
Right.
Right, you mentioned it, yeah.
Okay.
And fix the chimney.
I'm sorry.
Fix the chimney.
Oh, fix the chimney, right.
Please, yes.
Please, yes.
I have visions of people, you know, just...
The flu height, right?
The flu, it's too short.
It's way too short. It's like my height. But it's shown with that clearance from the building.
Yeah, but I think he still needs to be above, think, think about it. Think about standing there.
It's a minimum four feet.
It's my height. It's like five feet tall.
Oh.
So...
Smoke gets in your eyes.
And, and everything else.
All right, so we need, let's see, what's the...
I'll get you more photos of the, to go along with the neighborhood area study.
The area study has to include heights of buildings that you're, actual heights of buildings that you're using to make your argument that the height of this building is compatible with neighborhood character. So we could have a submission in three weeks. Would put us on April 13th for submission and May 3rd for the next continued hearing.
April 13th and May 3rd?
Yes.
That's as soon as we can have another hearing? Absolutely, that's it?
That's as soon as we can have another hearing.
Okay.
Item number 22329, I'm sorry. Item number 22329, 14 BC, 1316 AM US Brooklyn.
Okay. It's adjourned.
Good afternoon, Lyra Altman from the office of Lyra Altman. We submitted an adjournment request as we told your board. We're having some difficulty obtaining a revised Department of Buildings objection from the Department of Buildings. Just for your information, what occurred is they decided that we needed to be assigned to a new examiner because the examiner had left and then they thought that because we filed at BSA and had taken too long, according to their estimations, that the case needed to be reinstated. It has now been assigned to a new examiner. It's been reinstated and now we are still...
You got a new job number even? No. They, oh, they said like an expired job number.
Correct, although technically it's not supposed to expire if it's at BSA. You understand that, I understand that. Apparently DOB was having great difficulty understanding it and the client rather paid a hundred dollar fee than continue debating something and take time. So we are currently waiting for a DOB objection and if you could offer any help, the rest of the submission is ready.
Okay, yeah, we can make a call to DOB about that.
We would truly appreciate that.
So you're, you're noting a call? Okay, and maybe giving them a call to remind him in case?
I would be glad to give you a call, Ryan.
Yeah. Ira or... Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, yeah, we can do that.
I would truly appreciate that. It's the only thing holding up our submission to your board.
So then we could put you on for the 26th? That's what you asked for, right? April 26th?
That's correct.
And hoping that, because that's all you're waiting for, we could have the objection the day before?
It's fine. I would like to revise the BZ form and the statement of facts and findings to reflect the new Department of Buildings objection, of course.
Okay.
Just that the language is accurate for you and the dates are accurate, but I can do that very quickly once I obtain that document.
Right, right, okay. But really, if you get the objection like Monday afternoon, you know, we can...
I would truly appreciate that.
Okay. So then for an adjournment to April 26th and the submission, the only thing that we're waiting for then is this objection or there were other things on the submission? Because you could make the rest of the submission pending...
Well, there were some things you wanted, the statement of facts and findings to be amended. I have it prepared, but I'm waiting to insert the new Department of Buildings objection date and the new language. The BZ form I would like to amend to reflect the new BZ, the new DOB objection as well, just for accuracy and consistency.
But to give us enough, let's just say...
If I don't have everything by the submission date, I will submit everything other than the DOB objection if you'd like.
Other than that, and you'll just have a cover letter saying we're still waiting for the...
Be glad to.
To get it, okay, that'd be fine.
Then I can amend the statement again, no problem.
Right. So submission date then, April 6th.
Hopefully that won't be an issue. I'd like to believe we can get the objection before that.
Okay, well, we'll give it a college try.
Appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good work.
Item number 234415 BC, 145 Central Park North, Manhattan.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Calvin Wong from Acreman LLP, on behalf of the applicant. We attended the board's executive review session yesterday and understand that there are a few questions related to the parking study. We have Don Tone from Sam Schwartz Engineering here to answer some of those questions.
My name's Don Tone. I'm a senior associate and traffic engineer with Sam Schwartz Engineering. I think in five brief minutes I can run through our findings from our previous study and address some of the comments that came up yesterday. In our, in our previous assessment, we made a determination that the, that the amount of traffic that would be generated by the proposed development would be a very low volume. This is not a subjective determination, it's based on DOT seeker standards, less than two to four during the peak hours, that's combined in and out. We made the determination that the driveway would not conflict with the bus operations under normal operating conditions. We observed that the two bus queue was approximately 100 feet, whereas our driveway is a little bit in excess of 120 feet. We also saw a lot of positive design elements in the geometric layout of the driveway. It has good visibility for pedestrians. It has a very wide sidewalk and approximately 25 feet that creates a good pedestrian environment that alerts the motorist to travel with caution. And there is no parking on the north side of the driveway, that is also, on the north side of the street, that is also advantageous. Yesterday, we received the comments that were dated March 18th that stated that there was a failure to address on our part, a number of safety and policy-related issues. They quoted two items regarding articulated buses. They mentioned that they're 90 feet, actually they're 62 feet bumper-to-bumper. And they said that it was likely to occur. We feel that it's highly unlikely to occur and we base this based on our review of the MTA's programming.
But isn't that up till 2017, the program?
19.
19.
2019.
But if articulated buses just become the way of the world for crosstown and avenue travel, then what?
Well, they would introduce the articulated buses to, they actually reduce the number of buses and create more efficiencies, or what the motivation would be behind the articulated There was also a concern about the three bus queues that were based on observations made on March 16th and 17th. 17th is probably not the best day to make field observations.
[laughing].
However, the buses they observed do often, often queue up in blocks of three and, in three bus pileups. And we were very concerned that we may have missed something. So we rushed out last night and we did observations from 4:00 to 7:00 PM for three hours, recording the arrival and departure times of the buses. Over the three-hour period, we recorded 65 buses arriving. That's one every two to three minutes, so it's a very active bus stop, obviously. We did observe that within the three hours at 12 times, there was a two-bus queue. So it's pretty frequent, it worked out consistently to be four times during the four o'clock hour, four times during the five o'clock hour, and another four times during the six o'clock hour. So that two-bus queue was observed. Regarding the three-bus queue, we did see that, actually. However, it occurred only two times over the three hours that we were out there. And the standing time for the, for the three-bus queue was between one and two minutes. So although we did see the three-bus queue, I don't think, well, I do know that it doesn't really change our determination that, that the occurrence is in frequent nature, that the duration is very limited, and that the probability of the occurrence happening simultaneously with active activity at the driveway is highly unlikely.
Okay. Questions with that?
Yes.
So highly unlikely and so... Is there a way to, and let's just say articulated buses are introduced and like I mentioned yesterday, articulated buses do pile up even though they're supposed to be efficient. Traffic in New York is not so reliable, right? So, so what could you recommend, or you don't have to do this right there in front of us, but what could you recommend as a way to prevent cars that are trying to make a left-hand turn eastbound from affecting the bus queues or from cars exiting the garage from affecting the bus queues?
Well, I would defer it to the data that shows that it would, the occurrence would be less than, the buses load and depart very, very quickly. So it would be a temporary, like any other left turn into and out of a driveway, we'd have to wait till the movement was clear before conducting your turn.
But while it's waiting, it's sitting, sitting on the sidewalk. We're trying to figure out how, which is an active crosstown sidewalk, right?
Yeah.
So the question is, is there some sort of signalization system that could be instituted that eliminates or reduces significantly any chance that signalization, signage, traffic lights, whatever, whatever, that reduces the chance that there would be an interference?
To coordinate between the queue that's created from the bus and the activity at the driveway? No, ma'am, I can't think of anything other than that. We do, the advantage is that it is, if we have a 12-foot length vehicle, we have a 25-foot sidewalk. Even if the vehicle notices where, you know, the front of the wheels were near the street, it still would not be blocking the sidewalk, be putting a clearance behind it.
So even a light on the inside of the parking garage or something like that?
I think you're, what you're asking is, can you coordinate the light to coincide with the times when there's that bus spillback off the driveway?
Yeah, something like that. I don't know. No?
I can go back and check with the, with the others.
Okay.
Is it a motion sensor device? If the front of the parking space is blocked, then automatically inside the garage there would be a red light kind of thing? Like some kind of motion sensor device that would read what's in front of the garage?
Yeah, it's interesting thought. I don't know how it can be coordinated and approved by city DOT if we're going to put those measures into the city streets.
No, no, not in the, oh, I see, you mean putting the sensor in the street.
Yeah.
Because then you're putting it in...
No, no, well, no.
On the building itself.
On the building itself, which can, has direct, has a direct view onto that curb cut.
Yes.
And then it feeds into the lighting coordination. If it sees there's a block of that curb cut, then there's a red light in there. So when the driver is stepping out, knows that there is, there is an object that's blocking it and therefore should maintain the car inside the garage and not into the sidewalk. That's just, I'm just asking that a technology that does that.
We can double-check, but I'm not sure that that technology exists nor would it be able to discern a bus from any other vehicle or a pedestrian walking within that laser sensor area. And that becomes a problem. What we could do instead, though, I mean, apart from the fact that when this door opens, you'll have 25 feet, which offers you a wide range of view, so you can see a bus coming because the sidewalk is so deep. We could offer lighting system for pedestrian safety that will activate.
Yeah, must do that. I'm sorry, did you identify yourself? I didn't...
Calvin Wong, sorry.
That's what I didn't think. Okay. We definitely need a pedestrian safety on the outside.
Would limiting the right, the turns from the garage to right turn only be any use in this situation?
I don't feel...
In terms of just the conflict with, you know, traffic and the buses.
I don't think, our firm does not think the level of activity from the garage is going to warrant that.
Okay. 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 Anybody further comments about that? Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for coming.
I believe there's a speaker unless the board has any questions for me at this moment.
Okay. So we don't have any other questions? Are there any speakers on this? Yes, please come. Please state your name for the record and you'll have three minutes.
Francine James. Good afternoon, commissioners. I would just like to say that we stand by the submissions that were made. Members of the community have observed numerous buses bunching in threes that routinely move to the bus stop. As the chairperson said, potentially there is the likelihood that longer buses will be merged into the bus system. There are three different buses that are there, the two, the three, and the four. As it stands, if the three buses, and I believe I attempted to offer photographs, but if the three buses line up, you are past the point where the garage door would be. So, and that's with the 40-foot buses, that's not considering that potentially 90-foot buses might be introduced at a later date.
The 62-foot?
62-foot buses. So potentially, it handicaps the community because if five years from now, the bus traffic flow changes and the sizes of the bus change with it to assist the commuters, then we're faced with a dilemma because the parking garage door is there and it's obviously something that you, that's before you and you're deliberating on. But we, again, would like to urge the commission to disallow the parking garage in its entirety. It seems that this project is already oversized for the community. It's already many concessions that have been afforded the developers. The community is very concerned about the parking garage as well as the bulk of the building, which has increased from, now it's not 40 deep, it's 48 deep. It's still huge for the community. So to grant them parking in addition to everything else that the, that they've gotten through this process seems unfair to the community.
I don't believe this is a parking, there's any waiver for parking, right? This is as of right amount of parking spaces?
Well, if it's as of right, I would ask that the commission consider moving the door further away from the bus stop, perhaps to the east, completely to the east side of the building design so that the community doesn't suffer in the event that other longer buses move into the route at some later point in time.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other speakers? No? Okay. You want to speak to that?
We explored moving the curb cut to the other side and for a number of reasons related to design, there was also a street planting that would have been affected. But we feel like this is the most efficient design for the building. It was something that was looked at very early.
You maybe take, just in, just, I think we're gonna close this, but if you could just have Sam Schwartz summarize what they discussed today?
Absolutely.
Since they followed up with a little more data and so on?
Including the data that was obtained last night.
Correct. And then, and you respond to that?
Sure.
Comment?
There's also, as the chair noted yesterday, the East Two testing that we're only recently aware of. So if the board chooses to close the case, we'd ask for a decision date at least two months.
Okay. Okay, that's okay, right, to close? Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. So, all right, so then we could have a decision two months from now or not? That's end of May?
May 22nd?
Sorry?
May 22nd?
Twenty...
Fourth, sorry.
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth.
May 24th?
March 24th.
Yeah. Okay, so what do we want? Another week. So how about a May 24th, a 25th submission? Does that work? Yeah, there's not enough time, according to Josh. So a May 25th submission for a June 14th decision would give you more, enough time to deal with the, we don't think there's enough time to get the sign off, that's why we're saying.
Okay, I mean, we're trying to expedite the process right now.
Right, but there's like, there's trying versus reality.
Sure.
So most of the time when we set it too close, it doesn't work out. And since the submission needs to be on the 25th, so the June 14th decision date?
Sure.
And that gives you a little more wiggle time in case everything else is submitted except for the final sign off from DDP, you get a little more breathing room in there.
Sure.
Okay?
Appreciate that.
Okay. So for a motion to close? Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Item number 2420215 BC, 6469 Broadway, The Bronx.
Good afternoon, commissioners, Madam Chair. We attended yesterday's review session and it seemed as if the questions of the board were answered by our previous submission of March 9th. So I'm here to answer any additional questions. And if there aren't any additional questions, we would ask that the board close the hearing.
Are there any other questions? Are there any other questions from the board?
No.
No? Okay. How about speakers? Please come.
May? Can I? Thank you. Thank you.
Please state your name.
Good afternoon. My name is Paul Ellis. I'm the chair of a special five-member self-help working group that was appointed by the Land Use Committee of Bronx Community Board Eight. I'm also the chair of the Housing Committee of Board Eight. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on this question. The self-help working group was appointed on September 5th, 2014, in light of significant community concerns. Accordingly, the working group held two public meetings and engaged in considerable other review concerning this project. Concerns included the height and the parking requirements of the building in question. It was felt that the building was too large for the lot, which resulted in parking being provided through the parking lifts. Although there was frustration that self-help was unwilling to make accommodations regarding the height, everyone concerned took some comfort that parking was in fact being provided for. When self-help first made the proposal to eliminate the parking lifts by seeking a waiver, I was told by Evelyn Wolf of Self-Help that they would not be pursuing a waiver unless the community board was in agreement. Thus, in good faith, the working group addressed this issue at a public meeting held on May 11th, 2015. The approximately 30 attendees from the community spoke with one voice that their overriding concern was parking and that they were strongly opposed to the waiver. In fact, there was not one dissenting voice, a sentiment that was communicated to Self-Help by means of a resolution passed at that meeting. Yet after Self-Help stated to me that they did not intend to pursue a waiver over community opposition, they then did exactly that by applying for the waiver in question. Then subsequently, at a meeting held on November 10th, 2015, the Land Use Committee passed a resolution disapproving of the proposed waiver. That resolution noted the fact that the required parking had already been accommodated and the building built in spite of the particular conditions of the site, negating several of the necessary findings. The resolution also noted the detriment to the public welfare that would occur by denying parking spaces to residents and merchants of a neighborhood where it is in short supply. Finally, the resolution noted that the variance was not the minimum necessary to afford relief in light of the fact that there were alternative means for the applicant to meet the zoning requirements. In conclusion, Self-Help tells us that they wish to be good neighbors. Yet at every turn, whenever they have an opportunity to listen to their neighbors, they uniformly choose in favor of their bottom line, and the current situation is no exception. Self-Help chose to build this building with full knowledge of the limitations of the site and the requirements for parking, to now give them a waiver of a requirement of which they had full knowledge when the building has already been built and parking lifts already funded with public monies. Over the focused and sustained objections of the community and the community board would send a very bad message to the residents of this area as well as the development community. The developers should feel free to cram whatever they can into a lot, comforted by the fact that at the end of the day, BSA will be there to let them off the hook. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speaker?
My name is Laura Spalter. I'm the co-chair of the Broadway Community Alliance in North Riverdale Civic Group. I'm speaking regarding what was said at the last BSA hearing on February 23rd. According to the applicant's EIS, a parking inventory was conducted on a weekday during the overnight encompassing one-quarter mile. We raised the following objections. One, the applicant's study fails to capture the extreme weekend parking congestion on Broadway as a result of heavily used fields in Van Cortlandt Park for soccer, cricket, and Little League softball games. Two, the assertion made on February 23rd that unfettered public parking is available at the riding stable concession in Van Cortlandt Park is false. Three, according to the social worker assigned to the adjacent 202 building, that building has only 63 units as compared to Self-Help's 86 units, making the applicant's comparison of parking needs invalid. The Self-Help building is close to Marshall Avenue, a congested commercial strip of many restaurants and small businesses whose livelihood depends on available parking. You have received a petition signed by 38 businesses located on Marshall Avenue. There are only 38 businesses on Marshall Avenue. Their results do not reflect the number of cars driven by commuters from adjacent Westchester who park here during the day in order to access our express buses to Manhattan or the number one train. The applicant has not addressed the additional impact on parking congestion resulting from the commercial tenant that will be located on the ground floor. A residential parking study published by the New York City Department of City Planning in 2009 provided very important data on outer boroughs parking versus Manhattan. In the outer boroughs, these points were made. Living near trains and buses does not necessarily affect or lower car ownership. Census data clearly shows that there are more cars in the outer boroughs than the data provided by New York State Department of Motor Vehicles and cited by Self-Help. A significant trend, third, is that more people who live in the outer boroughs commute to their jobs within their own boroughs or even out of the city, necessitating car ownership. Nothing has changed since this study was published, except that parking in our community is worse. Future parking needs of the residents of Van Cortlandt Green cannot be predicted as residents and staff change. Clearly, this waiver is to the detriment of our community. Bronx Community Board Eight, Congressman Elliot Engel, State Senator Jeffrey Klein, Assemblyman Jeffrey Dinowitz, and Councilmember Andrew Cohn have already documented to BSA their staunch opposition to this parking waiver. Please vote no.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Good afternoon. My name is Rob Spalter, and I am a member of that Community Board Eight Land Use Working Group. I'm here today to urge the BSA to decline the applicant's request for a waiver of the 19 required parking spaces on the basis that Self-Help has not taken advantage of all its less extreme remedies. Rather than seeking a waiver of the requirement of parking spaces for the attendance, Self-Help could have requested that DOB eliminate the requirement of the 24/7 attendant parking. That would give the community the benefit, the 19 spaces, while relieving Self-Help of the financial burden. Since Self-Help has failed to exhaust its other remedies, BSA should deny its request for the more extreme remedy due to a waiver of the full parking requirements. So please deny it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, Mr. Stark. Want to speak to any of those comments?
I believe our previous submissions and information that's been submitted to the record adequately addresses each of the concerns that--
Pull the microphone.
I apologize. I believe that our previous submissions to the board and testimony on the record that has been made at the previous hearing adequately addresses each of the concerns of the community members that have spoken today. If there are any specific questions that the members of the board still have, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, again, I would request that the board vote to close this hearing and adopt a resolution.
Okay. Any other questions? You want to, I just wanted to, because the public wasn't here yesterday for the review session, to comment on the very, very elaborate parking analysis that actually was done in-house by our Commissioner Otley Brown, who has gone to look at the site, I think, every day for the last month, and found ample parking both in the adjacent parking lot and on the streets. So the materials that was provided by opposition doesn't really comport with that observation, which is extremely detailed, with photographs, with photographs, dates, lots of information. We don't normally get that much in-house information. Okay. So if there's no other comments here, I'd like to close this. Chair Pearl Mutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
Okay. And then, I don't think there was anything else outstanding, so I'd like to set this for a decision.
Could be decided today?
Uh huh. I don't know. Are we, usually Josh gets upset when we do that. Okay, everything prepared. So yes, we can vote on this. So then for a motion, we're okay?
Yep.
For now?
For now.
Okay. So for a motion to grant? Chair Pearl Mutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, commissioners and Madam Chair.
New cases, item number 1, 33314BZ, 2323 East Fifth Street, Brooklyn. Sorry, sorry.
Not a problem. Good afternoon. Lyra Altman from the office of Lyra Altman. We attended your executive session yesterday, heard your comments. To address a few of the smaller comments first, regarding the history of ownership and whether it was common ownership, I've been able to research the history of this site back to 1977. Unfortunately, ACRA's doesn't go back any further. We will, of course, obtain more information to go back to 1961, but unfortunately, it's not readily available online. So we are working on that. Regarding the Ocean Parkway district, there was a comment that it wasn't on the zoning analysis form, and it actually is listed under special districts on the top left of that form.
Says it, but no reference--
That's correct. But none of the sections were referenced because that section only applies if you are front on Ocean Parkway or if you're a community facility. This is actually a single-family home, not a community facility, and we don't have any frontage on Ocean Parkway. The time you're typically seeing the Ocean Parkway district mentioned, the 113 sections on the zoning form, it's because it's either a community facility on Ocean Parkway or in the sub-district. This home is not in the sub-district. So it was mentioned in the statement as well, but again, we didn't mention any of the sections because they weren't relevant to this application. Regarding the street elevation, the architect is going to confirm. He is also going to provide you a diagram with calculations showing the amount and percentage of the existing floor and perimeter walls that are being maintained to show that this is truly an enlargement. And there was a comment regarding, there was one other, oh, the foundation walls. Those were incorrectly shown. We apologize. He's going to have that corrected as well.
Okay. So he's not making the foundation walls like two feet thick and, okay, just checking?
No.
Really?
That was actually just an error on the plans. It's something that's occurred before, and it's something, he doesn't want to have shown on the plans because that's not what's happening.
Okay. It's a layer thing.
Yeah. I'm sure it is just a layer that's being removed. Regarding the side yards, Mr. Vincenti is here with us. He will discuss that with you in a moment. But we also wanted to discuss the rear yard. As you saw from the photographs, the rear yard of this home actually is somewhat encased. On the back left, we have a neighbor that built out quite far back with an enlargement that is taller than one basic story. It may truly be one story, but it doesn't appear to be one story in height. If you look at it, it's quite a tall one-story. In the rear, we already have a garage that has taken up a good percentage of the rear. So we felt that a request for a 20-foot rear yard is actually in line with what would fit in the character of this neighborhood. And Mr. Vincenti designed this home in a way that he thought would not negatively impact the neighbors, as is typical.
He'll talk to us more about that.
If you'd like, you can, or I can address it further--
Yes, we're going to let him. Yeah.
Good afternoon. Chairperson Pearl Mutter, commissioners. My name is Sal Vincenti. I am the architect for this project. All right, so let's talk about the design. So first of all, I just want to state that this site is one block south of the sub-district in the Ocean Parkway area. So where, if it was in the sub-district, a 20-foot rear yard would be as of right. So it's the same community, basically, that's enlarging, and the sub-district was passed, I don't know, maybe 20 years ago, perhaps a little more, and that the community has grown and they're moving south. So the requirement for the additional square footage is not a luxury as much as it is a necessity. But on the other hand, as far as the design layout, you will see that this is--
Sorry, before you do that, where is the sub-district that allows it to be?
Avenue V is the line.
Avenue B?
Avenue B is V, Neck Road, and then we're on W.
Okay, and you're on W. Okay.
It's one block north of our site.
One whole tax block.
Yeah, we have Graves and Neck Road that cuts our tax block, but it would be one block, yes.
Okay.
So in the layout, we have designed the same house that we would design for the same community, one block over. So I don't think it's out of the ordinary, and the layout, there's really not any additional space or any additional space that is not required by them. I'm not sure where we could redesign to meet their needs.
Okay. Independent of that stuff, because we're trying to stick with the neighborhood character issue, which you don't need to establish where you have a 20-foot rear yard as of right.
Okay.
So the first part is, can we talk about the side yard first?
Yes, we can.
I don't understand how you can reduce the side yard total.
Okay. So Section 2348 allows us to reduce the side yards because it's a smaller lot than required.
The total. It reduces--
Correct. The total will be 13 feet in a detached, single-family residence. We have a 28-foot lot, which we allow a reduction of four feet.
Correct.
So the total would be nine feet.
Correct.
Correct. So if we were to do an as-of-right extension, the law says that in no event, it should be less than five feet. So we could technically do five feet on the right and five feet on the left.
That gives you 10.
And would give us a 10-foot rear yard. Now, so we went to five foot on the right, and now what we're asking for is the straight-line extension on the left, which is an existing noncompliant. So that's how we got to the five feet.
But that's the part I'm not getting. We don't have the authority to reduce the total, right? So when you opt to reduce it to what you view as as-of-right, it still can't reduce the total that's required by 2348, which is nine feet.
Correct.
That's consistent board position on this rule.
All right.
So we never reduce the total below the 13 feet minus whatever, so you're a foot short.
I think in the past, we've gotten that from the board?
You haven't intentionally gotten that from the board.
Okay.
We did a lot of research on this subject, and we never found the board waiving this, and it always makes the statement, then does the math, and says, you know, the total's still good. Or the total's noncomplying, but that's because it's an extension of the existing noncompliant condition. It'd be different if you were already at eight feet in your total and you're just making a continuous extension.
I do. My thinking was, if I can have five feet as-of-right on the right side, and the other side, I'm asking for an extension of the existing noncompliant, therefore, you know, maybe I could get that under special permit. That's really what I was thinking.
Okay. So the answer was not.
I have to rethink that one. Okay.
Okay.
All right. I will discuss with my client as far as that is concerned.
Okay. And then, but, and in order to qualify that, that's what Ms. Altman is working on, is the pre-61 ownership, but that seems pretty obvious from the Sanborn maps. Maybe, I don't know if you'll be able to find it, Dee, but it seems obvious.
Not from the Sanborn map.
Seventy-seven as of now. Yeah, okay.
Because we have a 1929 Belchah High that shows the lot as existed, but not the ownership.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay. Okay, so then let's go back to the rear yard.
Okay.
Could I just ask a question about that five-foot side yard? I just had a question whether or not, it's a shared driveway, right? So my question was, is if you're knocking that down to five feet, aren't you going to impinge on your neighbor's ability to get to, I guess they've got a garage in the back?
Well, there is no easement. There is no written easement. The neighbor does have 6.61, whatever that is, 6.8 inches. So the extra five feet would give a more than ample space to pull into the backyard because it would give a total of 11 feet.
And to pass a car that's already parked--
Okay.
Oh, could I just ask a question about that five-foot side yard? I just had a question whether or not it's a shared driveway, right? So my question was, is if you're knocking that down to five feet, aren't you going to impinge on your neighbor's ability to get to, I guess they've got a garage in the back?
Well, there is no easement. There is no written easement. The neighbor does have 6.61, whatever that is, 6.8 inches. So the extra five feet would give a more than ample space to pull into the backyard, because it would give a total of 11 feet.
And to pass a car that's already parked on your side of the lot?
Sure, because what I've done is I've set back, well, the front, right now, they could, they don't park there. Neither one can actually park there, but I've, because there is no easement, I'm not a, technically, I don't have to give them, I could put up a fence, basically. Now, whether she can get in or not, that's not really up to us, because there is no written easement.
But aren't these houses built so that there is a shared driveway?
There is a common areaway without a shared driveway. There is no right-of-way, there's no easement.
Well, your neighbor's gonna love you.
Now, so for one, they're not reducing it to five. It's gonna be reduced to six and change, 6.3.
So there'll be enough space.
Well, either way, there's 12 feet.
Still tight, but whatever, yeah.
Most, a driveway that's required is eight feet.
Eight feet, right, so it's more than eight feet, right.
Okay, all right. Sorry.
Okay, so then?
Yes.
So in the rear yard, understood about all the stuff that's going on in the backyard. You can see from the photographs, there's lots of garages back there. But we never have that information about how high are those garages and their impact on kind of what it's like to be on the second floor of these houses if you were high, right? So we need you to make a case for why you can be taller than the garages, and if it's not a good case, then how you're gonna modulate the massing so it has less of an impact.
Okay, I could do that. We'll give you the dimension of the height of the one-story stucco on the left, which is a lot higher than normal one-story.
Yeah.
So we'll take a look at that, and certainly, let's see how we did the third floor. So what we did, even at the attic level, we have sloped the back. It's a, it's not an A-frame, so therefore, that would give that impression of being two stories only, so it's not so obtrusive. So, all right, I will take a look at that height, and we'll get back to you on that.
Okay, because you have like storage and things like that. You don't need to have so much of a...
On the attic, you mean?
On the attic level. I mean, in other words, you have a lot to play with at the attic level where you could pull back, and...
If you take a look at the re-elevation, it is sloping back.
Right.
So I don't think it would be that obtrusive. And I don't even have a dormer at that point, so the height is reduced.
So what you need to do is establish that, it'd be great if you could do this visually, nothing like visually, to establish that the impact of your second story and the attic on the adjoining properties that have structures around will not affect neighborhood character. That's the whole goal, that the neighbors don't think they have this massive thing coming up around them.
Okay.
Right?
I think we can do that.
Okay, good.
Leave it. Anything else?
Any other comments, questions? Are there any speakers? Okay. Thank you. Okay. Pretty massive in the elevations, yeah. Yeah, just a note again for the architect. When I look at the side elevation, it's very massive at the back, right? So that's the whole point, is it's rising to a point that's much higher than the adjoining garages, and that's what we're talking about, is how to reduce that apparent mass above the second floor, from the second floor and up, okay? I know you're up to the job, okay?
He definitely is.
Okay.
If we could have three weeks to submit, please.
Is that enough, three weeks?
Oh, I asked him first, of course.
Okay, good. So that would be a submission on April 13th. We're still good? With a continuation on May 4th. Is that still all right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Item number 2, 2115BZ, 1123569, Abbey Queens. The three different, what's it, three different things?
Hello again, Jessica Rubenstein, on behalf of Eric Palatnick, PC. We attended yesterday's review session, and we heard the board's comments. I believe the first comment was regarding the community board recommendation. We're passing that around right now, but the community board voted in favor of the application. We'd be happy to formally submit that. In terms of the additional 1,100 approximately square footage of floor area that's being added to the building, I, looking, after looking at the plans and looking at our statement, we referred to the 1,100 square feet of zoning floor area that was going to be added. We can revise the plans and the zoning analysis form. We also have a chart on drawing P001 of the plan to break down the, it includes the cellar square footage, the gross square footage. We could also revise it to include the additional attic gross square footage. However, we do maintain that we will only add about 1,100 square feet of zoning floor area, as the cellar is to be exclude, the cellar floor area is to be excluded, and the attic shall also be excluded, since the height of the attic ranges from five feet to seven feet 11 inches, and pursuant to 1210 of the resolution in the subject R12A district, an attic floor area may be excluded under eight, if it's under eight feet. But we can revise the calculations to include the, all the gross zoning calculations, and to clarify.
Okay, and what about the use of the cellar, which has two powder rooms and a shower?
So you'll also see there's a DOB bulletin that's being distributed. According to that bulletin, the Department of Buildings permits a full bathroom, which includes three fixtures. So that should allow the first bathroom, the second bathroom, the architect, the project architect is actually here today if the board would like to directly ask any questions, but the architect will revisit that second bathroom and perhaps submit a reconsideration to the Department of Buildings to see if it's permissible.
So I just quickly, I don't know, I didn't review this. This cellar in order to, that contains a three-fикter bathroom shall not, by reason of it having three fixtures, be considered for, okay. Okay, that's switch.
So we can revise our statement to include that analysis as well.
Okay, I think to maybe clarify this, there should be notes on the drawings that says DOB to determine that neither, that the cellar and the attic do not constitute floor area?
We'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, because it's a little hard to believe, frankly. Okay, also, we need the drawings to show existing walls to remain, to establish that this is an enlargement?
We also circulated a demolition plan, but we can formally submit that.
Oh, that's this?
Correct. So the solid lines show the walls that are to remain, and the dotted lines are the walls that will be removed. And we can also revise the plans. I believe the board's question yesterday was that, on the actual proposed plans that we submitted to the BSA, it grays in the area, it grays in certain areas, and it includes the square footage, but the white areas, which are the areas to be proposed, do not include the square footages. So we'd be happy to revise the plans so that it discerns between the different square footages for different areas.
That would make it a lot easier. Okay, thanks.
I had the question regarding the proposed two-car garage. When I look at P001, it doesn't look like it's functioning as a two-car garage?
So there isn't existing one-car garage, there is a proposed two-car garage, and the architect would be happy to submit a circulation plan. What they think they're going to do is they're going to remove the areaway on P003.
Remove the areaway. Where, which is the areaway, so? In the rear yard? Oh, that. Well, I would still, when I look at 001, I'd like to see how two cars maneuver into there, because, I mean, there's very little, the garage is offset almost six feet from the side lot line.
Right, we see that.
And I really don't see how two cars, I mean, you can make a bigger structure, but that doesn't mean it functions as a two-car garage.
Okay, so if it...
Because you can't get into it.
Exactly.
You'd have to have one of those dimaxian cars that goes horizontally.
Or, doesn't everyone have those? We'd be happy to revisit that, and the architect will submit a circulation plan.
Or you could just reduce the request to the 300 square feet.
Right.
Right, but...
Yeah.
I think we prefer to keep it at the initial five, don't hold your... About that.
I have a question, it's more of a clarification on the drawing. If, as I'm looking at the existing plans and the proposed plans, up to page P003, the existing building footprint is shown as 37.6 inches wide. But when I go to P004, that existing building footprint is now 40.6 inches. So from what you're saying, it seems three foot of the new building would be overhanging over the 37 foot, but that's not how the drawing is reading? So if you could provide a clarification on that?
It's 40 feet on those floors as well. It's just that there's a segmented measurement on the cellar. See, it says 37 feet 6 inches, then it says three feet, that's part of the building.
That's the new areaway.
That's the new areaway.
Right.
It's been proposed.
And the building, if you look past that new areaway, the building... Just state your name.
Sandy Anagnostu, representing the office of Gerald Caliendo, Architect. Commissioner Ottley Brown is correct. It's the, the width is 40 foot 6 inches. So if you look at the first floor plan, it's 37 feet 6 inches, and then an additional three feet, which gives a total of 40 foot 6. There's no overhang.
No, 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 I'm talking about the shaded area. The shaded area on the, on that page, which means that's the existing footprint? The shaded area of the existing footprint reads 40 foot. Is that what the existing condition is, the existing floor?
Yes.
The second floor overhangs, and it's 40 feet, which is wider than this ground floor and the cellar floor? That's my question.
It's only wider in the rear by the areaway. It's not wider in the front. If you look at the bottom of the P002, it's 40 feet 6 inches wide. In the back, it's cut back for the areaway by three feet on the first floor, but the lower, the front part of the building is 40 feet 6 inches wide.
There is no overhang. The existing is...
No, the existing building's 37.
The existing building is 37 feet wide.
So it's wider than the existing?
But that's normal, right?
The shading shows the existing.
They're enlarging the building, that's part of their 10%.
I just want the shading to be consistent with the existing footprint. That's really what I'm getting.
Ah, okay.
So we will, we will graphically represent it more clearly.
You're saying on the second?
Okay, so with respect to that, I had a similar kind of a question, which had to do with the elevation of the first floor. On the existing drawings, it shows that the building is two, the grade to top of floor is two feet, and, or maybe it's the, yeah, the grade to the top of the first floor is two feet, and then on the proposed, the grade to top of floor is two foot 7. Is that because there's additional structure being added? Like, what's going on?
I'm sorry, which drawing?
If you look at, hold on, a section, any section will do. Or actually, even an elevation will do. E006, first floor is two feet off grade.
Yes.
And then if you go to the equivalent on the proposed?
E006.
No, P006 doesn't work, that's your, okay, P007. The top of your first floor is two foot 7. The reason this is relevant is because, again, it's supposed to be an existing building.
Okay, I don't know where that 7 inches is from, but I will, we'll clarify that. We'll check that.
And then, if you could just check in the R1, you have the side yard setbacks, you know, and the rear yard setback. I'm not sure if you comply, you know, above 30 feet, you have to set back your roof?
Yes.
If you could show the setback lines, and you don't, go past them.
We'll revise the drawings to show that.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Are there any speakers on this? No, no, no? Okay, so, all right, so I think we know what we need to do.
The architect told us she would like about three weeks, if possible.
Okay, so same schedule, are we okay with timing on?
What's the date?
Three, April 13th for submission, May 3rd here. Sorry, May 4th, no, May 3rd here.
Oh, geez, last one, you said May 4th. Okay, so that's May 3rd, okay.
Yes, the May dates are...
Yeah. No, I say May 4th for a submission date for other ones. May 3rd is a hearing, April 12th is the, April 13th, sorry, is submission. Confusing, Tony, I could see that podder as well. Okay.
Yeah.
We won't be here on May 4th, don't worry about it.
You can come, you're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, May 3rd.
Drive me crazy. It's late in the day.
It's getting later.
Yep, 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 yep. One more to go.
I think there's one.
No, we did say... I think it's the last one. Give me a few minutes to pack up, but what I wanted to show you, something quite...
Item number 3, 9915BZ, 7476, 8th Avenue.
Why can't they swatch? This is central apartment. Why can't they swatch that one instead of like, just look at the plan on the ground floor? Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna, yeah, yeah. So I'm gonna recuse from this, so give me a second, because it's the last one, and I'm...
Nope.
Okay. Why can't they just flip the plan?
Yeah, because the floor is not...
Right, so that's any questions? Just for the record, we were not talking about the current project.
Marjorie, you have to stay in the back? No, no, she's going to leave. We're done. It's not fair. There we go. Ah, I recognize that building. Ready when you are.
Oh, good afternoon, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners. I'm Phyllis Arnold from Bryan Cave, and I'm representing the property owner at 76 8th Avenue. As you know, we're here on bulk variances for a 12-story commercial office building with ground floor retail at the corner of 8th Avenue, West 14th Street. This is a C62 district, and we're asking for variances with respect to FAR and setback on the 14th Street side. We are an extremely small lot, we're 3,780 square feet, and we are, we are located right 38%, 36% of that square footage, the 3,780, is directly over the tunnel for the 8th Avenue subway line. We also are adjoining, on the 14th Street side, the tunnel for the L. I was, we were here yesterday, we heard your comments, and it certainly seemed, I think from all of... from all of you who, who raised issues, that the, the overall issue that was on the table was whether we were requesting the minimum variance necessary to relieve the hardship. It seemed that the hardship presented by the subway tunnel and the structural design challenges by that was, it seemed to be acknowledged in your comments. With your permission, we'll very briefly address today, follow up with a written submission. I will address a couple of the zoning questions and the issue of 122 Greenwich. And then we're gonna turn to our experts, because they're the ones who really have the answers. Neil Wexler, our structural engineer, was here but could not stay. The architect of record, Jean Kaufman, is here and he will address the comments that came from Commissioner Montanez on some of the structural design issues. Jessica Coors from J.S. Freeman Associates is here on the financials. In addition, we have a couple of questions about your comments that, if they're not answered in the colloquy, I think we'd like to come back and, and ask. So, if I could, you know, just flag that. Just a miscellaneous item or two, we are aware of the discrepancy that I think Commissioner Chandra noted on the drawings with respect to the setback distances. We will certainly fix that and, and that is a discrepancy in the plans. One of the questions that came back, came up yesterday was whether we could set the building back. Because as you know, the cantilever for the, for the underground below-grade structure is, is quite long. We could, and as Mr. Kaufman will, will demonstrate a little more expertly than I, he'll, he'll show you some of the consequences in terms of the floor plate and what that does. There is, in addition, a street wall requirement in this district, so we would be back asking for a waiver of that. He will, Mr. Kaufman will address that in a little bit more detail when he steps up in just a moment. 122 Greenwich, the variance site just south of our site, is an 11-story, 110-foot, mixed use, residential and commercial with a little bit of community facility. It is also located over the 8th Avenue subway tunnel. However, the site, the lot area of that site is almost 3 times the lot area of ours at 10,697 square feet.
And the, the subway is, compromises that site by what percentage?
I, I don't, I don't know the answer to that, I will, will follow up with that. It's a shallow lot, though, and it's, it's shallowness and irregularity were among the bases of the hardship findings there. But what, what that larger size, and, and it was developed residentially, and so the, the floor plate parameters, the floor plate, the, the marketing of the floor plates is, presented a very different set of considerations than the ones we're looking at with a commercial office building. It was a split lot, irregularly shaped, shallow lot, that did, that did come in with a, a smaller relative request on the FAR, but as I said, had a flexibility in the size of the lot to accommodate some of the constraints on the site that we don't have at 3,780 feet. So, we would suggest that 122 Greenwich, while it certainly shares some of the bases with us, the hardship finding, in that it, it must, it had to deal with the subway tunnel, is really, was a very different project from the one that we are proposing at the corner. I, I do wanna note just the fact that it's at the corner, that 12 stories and 120 feet, the proposal that we've, we've got on the table sort of finishes the intersection by creating this second pair of matching buildings. There is across 8th Avenue, there are 2 landmark banks, and right across 14th Street, there's a 20-story commercial building. This corner is, is, would, would finish that aesthetic, if you will, and I think that's, hopefully that's part of the reason yesterday we didn't hear a whole lot on, on the community character here. I do wanna turn to Mr. Kaufman now to address, I think, Commissioner Montanez's questions and then Jessica Coors will address Commissioner Ottley-Brown's financials.
That would be great.
Jean Kaufman, the architect for the project. This is a very unusual site, I would say a unique site in the sense that, aside from the subway issue, it's a very unusual size to do a project of this nature, being 46 by 80. And unfortunately for us, as you just heard, more than a third of that site is above the subway tunnel. So if, if you look at the floor plans, we show that curved line that shows the portion of the site that, that is above the tunnel. And in, in looking at this, this required us to do a number of things. For one thing, all of the core of the building had to be moved to the inside corner. And in attempting to meet the, the street wall requirement on, on both streets, because we have 2 streets here, so, you know, a very large amount of frontage, which normally would be a good thing, but of course here, you know, the, the street wall and the setback issues hit us on both sides. So it's a very constrained, very difficult site, and so in organizing this site, what we needed to do was to be able to put a substantial portion of the building above the subway. And as pointed out, the, the site area being very small, even a full 100% coverage here gives us a very small footprint. So we proposed here 8 floors with that footprint and then setting back more than the required setback on the 8th Avenue side because of the subway, but less than the required setback on 14th Street to try to create a footprint which would be outside the line of the subway.
So, so the reasoning, because I, I think all of us sort of had, had the question of whether that setback on, on, I guess it's 8th Avenue, the large setback, right?
Correct.
Was, and that was sort of your, your minimum that you could, that you could go? You couldn't go, you couldn't sort of inch it towards the avenue anymore because you have issues with the structure above the tunnel? That's as far as, that's sort of your, you know, holding that line? You can't go, you can't cross over it?
Um, we could theoretically come past this, I mean, the required setback here is only 10 feet.
Right.
But this is that subway line.
And we thought that would, if you, if you could get to the 10-foot line or closer to it, it would give you a better floor plate and therefore you might not need, you know, 12 stories, but that's-
Well, using-
That, I think that went through all of our minds. So maybe, maybe you could explain a little bit more about, about the structure.
If I may, I, I would characterize this as being stuck between a rock and a hard place and rock-
Literally.
-in a literal sense and I'll leave it there. Because I think that, you know, our problem here is that you can see the subway that's underneath the substantial portion of the building, and if we put more of the building, Commissioner Hanksen, above this, we're exacerbating our problem of the eccentricity of overturning because we're trying to, you know, keep these loads off of, of the subway. So what we tried to do in, in all of this is to also be a good neighbor. We're trying to fit our building within the 120-foot height which we have, because we did the opposite, we would have this sort of ridiculously skinny, extremely tall, actually 17-story tall, building. And if we do, as you're pointing out, the alternative coming out here, we're making our structural problem worse. It would be good for us for a footprint, I mean, from a development point of view, it'd be wonderful, but it, it ends up kind of catastrophic in a, in a structural sense. And we already have a 2-story high trust, I think there was a comment raised about, was there a sort of easier way to do this? We're finishing a building now in Brooklyn that has a very small piece over the subway. We were able to handle it with a normal panel lever at a regular floor, there was no variance. Those things happen. This is not that kind of condition at all. And you can see 2-story high trust is a very major piece of structure to do this, and this would have to be beefed up even further. And lastly, taking off bulk from here, this is actually effectively like a counterweight for the overturning. And as we move, you know, mass from here to there, it's already in balance, this is 12,000 square feet, this is 9,000, so I already have an overturning momentum, which I have rock ties and so on, counteracted, and we didn't wanna make it worse.
Well, my thinking was sort of that, similar to the adjacent building. I think the adjacent building has a 6, like a 6-story base height?
I believe that's correct.
And, and looking at the subway, the way it flows underneath the adjacent site, it almost looks like 50% or more of the site is underlaid by the subway tunnel, and it, it actually, you know, occurs along the street wall similarly to your case. So, my thinking is, well, I would like a comparison regarding what sort of foundation system they use in terms of a cantilever and what would it do to your costs and your cantilever if you, if you had a 60-foot base height? And then setback.
If, if you would like that analysis, I guess we'll talk about it and provide it. I, I will say that, that, that building has a very much larger footprint, so they were able to relocate a lot more floor area than we will, but we'll be, you know, we'll, we'll provide what's being requested.
Because I noticed that your construction costs in the proposal, some of them I just didn't understand, they're significantly higher than the as-of-right in terms of facade costs and things like that. That seem more than just the proportion of, you know, enlargement.
And might that be mitigated with a shorter perimeter wall?
A different building design, right. How much of the building design and the fact that you're insisting on this cantilever and this 8, you know, this 80-foot street wall height, how much of that is increasing your construction costs? And is there another building design which would lead to lower costs and perhaps a lower FAR?
We would be happy to design a building with lower costs, we haven't found it. So we appreciate that and I, I understand your question. We'll, we'll prepare some analysis to, to show that.
Great. Any further questions for the architect? Okay, I think we're, I think, I think we've quizzed the architect enough.
Have you given us streetscapes along 8th Avenue there? Or how it appears with the adjacent building? Well, that doesn't really give a good streetscape, quite honestly.
Okay, if, if more is required, we'll submit, I believe some things.
Something that gives us a, a sort of a more in-scale idea of-
How the buildings interact.
What the adjacencies look like, yeah.
Sure, I mean, the, the building that we've been talking about, 122 Greenwich, is actually somewhat taller than us, they went for a height difference.
Right, but in terms of the street wall, it's significantly lower.
It's a little lower, correct?
Maybe you can include that in your analysis of, of 60-foot height as opposed to your 80-foot height. So we can see it visually. Thank you. Next up.
Hi, good afternoon, I'm Jessica Coors from J.S. Freeman Associates. We attended the review session yesterday and we're prepared to answer some of the comments today. The first comment you had was in regard to the real estate tax, and we, we went back to the office and we reviewed the real estate tax and you're correct, the current taxes were not calculating correctly, so we regret that and we'll make that revision. In the meantime, I can walk you through how they should be calculating in terms of the construction real estate, the rent up and the projected taxes in Schedule A.
Right, and you're recognizing the 3 years progress exemption?
Right.
That's going to freeze your taxes during construction.
Right, we don't consider an increase during the construction period.
So you're at 72, you should be at $72,000 a year?
That's the current, that's correct.
And that's what it'll be, 72,000 times?
For the typical, we have a year and a half of real estate taxes, and for the as-of-right and the proposed, we're using 2 years. For the rent-up, real estate taxes, we're basing that on the projected taxes found in Schedule A for half a year.
Rent up is half a year for all scenarios?
Yes. And then the projected taxes in Schedule A was determined using our rule of thumb, 20% of just the office income. And we're assuming the retail tenant would pay this directly. And as a side note, this comes to about $13 to $14 a square foot of, based on the office area, and we think this is on the low side, and we typically see it in $17 to $20 a square foot.
Can you provide all this in a narrative?
Absolutely.
And everything kind of perfect?
Absolutely. Now, we heard a comment on the retail rents, that the subject property is new construction and a lot of our comps were older retail storefronts, and we'd be happy to search for new comparables. And you also mentioned a Cranes article about storefronts getting renovated?
Yeah, there was an article, and I believe it was in Cranes last week, and it basically said that a new developer was, I forgot the property, but it was, I think it was somewhere in that area, was actually renovating the first floor and had expected to increase the rents from $200 a square foot to $300 a square foot, just on the basis of renovating that first floor retail space, putting in more windows and, and having the optimum, I guess, floor-to-ceiling heights, but look that up.
Yeah, I, when I went back to the office yesterday, I tried a quick Google search for the Cranes article and it didn't pop up right away, so I'll-
Maybe it's New York Times?
Okay.
But give it a try, but in any case, that led to my question about having newer, nicer spaces as comparable.
Sure, understand, well, we'll review and we'll do our best to find some additional comparables. There was a question on office vacancy? And for the vacancy, we've been using 10% as our nominal rate, and this is real consistent with our previous submissions.
Right, but let's get away from your previous submissions and let's go to the Cushman-Wakefield article?
Yes, I did find that.
Okay, so you need to bring it down.
Okay, well, we'll take a look at it, and between yesterday and today, we, we found it and we'll, we'll take it into consideration in our submission.
Well, let's do it this way, I'm bringing it down in my analysis, so I'm just going to add back the income, whether you do or not, so.
Okay, right. That's understood. Number 4 was the income for the office spaces?
Yes.
You made a comment on finding some office comps that are in, with larger spaces. Now, 4 out of 5 of the comps we used ranged from 6, 1,700 rounded to 3250 square feet, and the one office comp at 860 Washington is over 10,000 square feet, and I really feel like this is the outlier here. That's a brand-new building with 1 floor at 10,000 square feet. The other spaces that I found, we found, I feel are a little more consistent with what the product being delivered here, being 1 floor.
Right, but do you really think that this building, being a, what, 12-story building, is really going to lease up little 1,700 square foot offices throughout the entire building, or do you think it's gonna try and grab a big tenant that's about 3 or 4 stories worth?
It might be a combination of both.
Right, so let's see some more larger spaces as comparables.
Absolutely, well, we're happy to go back and look and see some more, what, what's available. I heard a question on tenant fit-out, Commissioner Chandra, that's the, we've discussed before, the work letter, when the tenant comes in and finalizes their layout, then you can come and put in the demising walls and finish the air conditioning and fit out duct tape carpet, however you like. It's a-
But why would that vary between an as-of-right and a typical and also the proposed?
The typical and the as-of-right should be consistent-
Okay, then what?
823,275, it's based on the floor area, floors 2 through 6, not including the lobby. The proposed is just floors 2 through 12, not including the lobby, $45 a square foot.
So Commissioner Chandra, did you, did you find that, that they weren't consistent? That the fit-out costs between as-of-right?
I need to go back and look at the numbers, but I felt that the number, there was a big difference between the fit-out cost between the as-of-right, and so I'll have to go back and look at it in terms of the proportional of the square foot.
Okay, so maybe you guys can just review that, make sure that, that the numbers are the same.
Yeah, sure, certainly, happy to check and verify it and put it in writing. And, and we also heard about the facade costs earlier and at the executive session, and we're gonna be coordinating that with the cost estimator and taking a look at it carefully.
Okay, and the architect? Okay, and the architect?
And our...
Because if he's going to be taking a look at a shorter front wall, then you should be aware of that, and, and we should have all of the numbers for this.
And you can, like, give us an analysis by the square foot to show that it, you know, scales up comparably?
Right. An analysis of the square footage of the facade?
Of the surface, yes.
Okay, okay. I'll ask the cost estimator to prepare something like that.
Any other your income assumptions?
I'm good right now, just waiting to see more info from you.
Okay, I understand, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So before we talk schedule, I went, oh, I'm sorry.
Actually, I had a zoning question.
I'll try.
And, and this again, I did not get a chance to look at it. This is in the West Cheltes, outside the West Cheltes.
It is outside.
I just wanted to know, does it have a integration of this transit access requirement?
Not that I'm aware of.
Integrating it into the building or...
No, no. So before we talk schedule, I just want to, I guess, first ask a question or two, and then I'll close and talk. We, several of you mentioned the, the residential scenario, which I, we didn't work up fully pursuant to our, our initial discussion on this filing, but which we, we did in schematic, and, and I guess I wanted to see if we, if I could get clearer on what you got, what you would like to see in the way of the R-8A scenario.
Well, I think, at least for me, and maybe I'm speaking for a couple of others, but at least for me, it begged the question when I saw the form, and, and, you know, the request for 10.1 FAR, it begged the question in my mind, as I think it did in Commissioner Montanez's mind, that if, if one looked at the R-8A form and said, okay, if I drop to 60 feet from my front wall, and then I have a 10-foot setback from both streets, which I would have to provide, would that in some way change the numbers in such a way that I'd have a less expensive building? So I think that, that we were really talking about the form of an R-8A building, not so much that it has residential, but that since the equivalent is an R-8A, what would that do to the project, and would it be feasible? I'm hearing from the architect that because of the way that the building sort of has to balance itself, that might not be feasible, but we, we wanted to have a clearer picture of that.
In the form of the R-8A envelope?
The 60-foot street.
Okay. Anybody else?
We recognize that the, the R-8A envelope allows a 60 to 80-foot street wall height, and you're proposing right now an 80-foot and then a setback, which is wondering if you reduced it to 60-foot, and then, then the, maintaining the remaining portion of the R-8A street wall, which is 10-foot setback from 8th Avenue and 10-foot from 14th?
What that would, what that would do, so that we could see that?
Is that feasible?
As a commercial building?
As a commercial building.
Because you'd get a larger floor plate on, from, from above 60 feet, so which is beneficial from a commercial tenant.
So now, so now I'm, I must say, so you want, you want to look at it in terms of impact on a commercial building, and then what, I guess, what is the role that the R-8A envelope plays?
Well, the R, the R-8A envelope is, is going to give you, at least we thought, would give you a better floor plate and more floor area to, above 60 feet. We, you know, we sort of periodically looked at it and said, okay, let's go to 60 because that's their, their, their minimum, and then, you know, let's see what that would look like, and would that make any impact? And I think your architect is probably going to have to walk us through why it might not work, and why this, this form actually does work, and then talk us through some of the financials of, you know, because I, I think it would probably be, might be a cheaper building, but it might be more expensive because you then have to figure out how you're going to span across the tunnel, so...
Yeah, it'll increase the amount of space that's above the tunnel, but I understand your point about it, and we can try to show that. I assume we would eliminate the 80% lock coverage, which applies to residential, only talking about the, the overall mass.
Correct.
Okay, we can do that.
The other thing is, if you could tell us, there's a certain amount of loading you can put on the tunnel, but, and then you can't exceed that amount of loading. So my question would be, I mean, the existing buildings sit on the tunnel.
This is true.
They appear to, correct, two stories.
So, right, well, I think the two little buildings are three stories. So my question would be, if you actually had some of the loading on the tunnel and cantilevered certain floors above it, is that another option that could be looked at?
We can look at that, we met with the TA back in September, and we, we looked at that as an option, and we looked at the, the trust, and I think that there was a concern about how much load the, the tunnel could take, even though it's designed to take some load, this is created over a period of time, and because we have so much of the, the structure above it, and it's the TA's recommendation, you know, that we proceed this way.
So maybe that could be included, maybe, in, in a narrative, saying that, you know, to do some research, figure out how much load that tunnel could take, say, well, you know, this is how much it can take, we would be increasing that by whatever X amount it would be, therefore that's what we have to really be concerned with.
And another, if you have any correspondence or direction from the TA?
Yes.
Saying, you know, we're not going to permit anything beyond the cellar and first floor to load on, you know, if you have something like that, if you could give that to us?
Yeah, we can describe, it was a meeting on September 25th, there was no correspondence, but we could go in and meet with them and explain, explain the project, yeah.
Okay, great.
I just want to note, we did get a conditional approval from the community board on this, and the conditions reflect some of the concerns, same concerns you have all raised, so I, I, but, but they did vote 38-0 to approve it.
Right.
And with that, unless you have more questions?
Do we have anything else? Are there any speakers on this item? What? They all belong to the team? Oh, my goodness. Seeing none, shall we try and set a schedule?
I actually have one, I have a one question.
Yes.
I, regarding the 14th Street subway, does that also add to the construction in terms of monitoring cost? And is it just the, the monitoring cost and construction cost, is it just 8th Avenue, or is it also being affected by 14th Street?
On 14th Street, we do have some extra costs, there's actually an entrance, there's a staircase that's right there that's up against the property.
So if you could also clarify that in your analysis, and how that is also adding to the cost and issues that may be having in your design?
Yeah, that, we, we can do that, that is a, you know, reasonable thing that we've done many times, that the real issue is, is the other part.
Okay, great.
Madam Vice President, I think we're going to need six weeks before submission.
Okay, so let's see, today is the 22nd. Can you submit May 4?
I don't think so, yes.
And we could then have a hearing, oh, let's see, we need time to review. We could, can we do it on the 24th? Can we put this on? For May 24, or we have too many? We'll do a hearing on May 24.
Okay, submission date, Madam?
Submission date is May 4.
May 4th, and this continued hearing, May 24.
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This concludes the public hearing for May 20, March 22, 2016. We wish.
Time just flies by.
Oh, no. What happened? Update.
Aw, geez. Someone turned off the computer. Aw, no.
That's weird. You just told it to shut down and it decided...